The Board of Supervisors, the County of Delmar, and the Governor body of all their special assessment and taxing districts for which said so board, which said board so acts is now meeting in regular session. Only those items that indicate a specific time will be heard at the assigned time. All other items may be taken out of sequence to accommodate the public and staff availability. So at this point, we ask the student by president, Alicia DeLamont DeLa Mendoza, please, as the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of Canada, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. So for those of you in the audience, as well as those of you watching us live on the internet, we are now the first stop on the road show of moving the meetings to different areas in the county. So we're at the Center of Education at Delmar High School and in the library, which I understand not all the teachers are thrilled about that, but we're gonna go anyway. So at this point, we will go into, well, any introduction of new employees? Okay, seeing no introduction of new employees. Do we have any reportable actions from closed session, County Council?
No, we do not.
Okay. So at this point, I'm gonna request any deletions, corrections, or additions from the board members to the agenda at this time. In order to add an item to the agenda, the matter must have come to the attention of the county subsequent to the posting of the agenda, and the matter requires action for the next regular meeting of the Board of Supervisors. Okay, seeing no additions or corrections, we'll move on to, we're gonna receive brief reports and announcements relative to the County of Delmar programs, the projects, progress with the two-by-two committees, goals committees, and the board's staff travel training reports. At this point, we're gonna, we'll start with Supervisor Finnegan on his report.
Sure. Thank you, Mike. First, I want to commend our chair for doing this road show again, something that we've done in the past and has been let go for a couple of years. It's nice to see us getting back out in the community. I know we're gonna go to climate in Smith River, perhaps Gasky as well, so it's nice to be able to get out into the public and, of course, in front of the high schools. Too bad more kids could be here. You know, I think that probably class, there you go. First meeting I had after our Board of Supervisors was a first five Children and Families Commission meeting. Got reports from all of our partners there, the business members, a lot of good work being done there, and I think at some point in time, Patty Grinelson, probably the executive director, will come back before the Board of Supervisors to make a more detailed report. But there's amazing partnerships going on there now and programs with the help of the business, especially since we don't have to worry about financing anymore. Then I went to the Regional Council of Rural Counties, and one of the things that we talked about there, aside from the legislation, was this new draft MOU between the Forest Service, Bureau of Land Management, CSAC, and RCRC. It's not between the counties themselves, that will come later. And what it is, is an MOU that talks about, number one, that the Forest Service and the Bureau of Land Management recognizes CSAC and recognizes RCRC as just not an individual or another person with comments, but rather as a government entity for the purpose of communication. And what is intended to do is, the MOU, is to enhance, not to restrict, how the federal agencies and the counties communicate with each other. This was before the county councils, because there was some concern that it was gonna weaken the coordination efforts. They said, no, it does not infringe on any county rights. It is merely to enhance the communication process. Anything that has already been documented is already right, like the coordination process. This is in addition to it. And I'm not gonna elaborate too much on what that MOU says at this point in time, because I do suspect, anticipate that it will come before our Board of Supervisors to have a full discussion after CSAC votes on it as well. It did pass, RCRC. We also had a speaker, Louis Brown, the state, he gives the status update on the state fairs. And actually, Governor Brown, this governor we have now, has made more appointments in this first year and a half than the previous governor Schwarzenegger did in seven years. So even though they're declining revenues, the fair boards themselves have been staffed up. What they're trying to find out is how to return some of these monies to these local communities, recognizing that fairs are an economic driver, especially in communities like ourselves. There's about $30 million out there now. They do see it as an economic driver. What they figure is that these fairs generate about $100 million into these communities. And we had a talk regarding, in the theme of the Forest Service. There's a draft guidebook that's out now on how Forest Service supervisors are supposed to be briefing in regards to the updates and plans. And I know that Supervisor Hemmingson and Sullivan are involved in this. What needs to happen is they need to strengthen the quote-unquote "coordination process." There's concerns about the planning rule in the guidebook. They do not reflect what the secretary in Washington, DC has said they're supposed to be doing. So when it starts coming down to the local level and the regional level, they're misinterpreting the strength of the coordination process the secretary wants. And there's a good reason for that, because in this new language, coordination, the word coordination is gone. They're trying to soften the language, and in fact, the language is softer than it was in 1982. So at a time when we're making inroads towards coordination, they're removing the word itself. Some of the other legislation, there's a couple SRA bills, which is the fire, the state responsibility areas, there's trying to limit some of the fees that CalFire is gonna be starting to charge in June, and then again in July. Chesbrough has some bills, and there's a couple of them out there. And then also, there's another bill, 1582, to waive fees with this April effects. Other action, I think you probably heard since our last meeting, map 21 passed the Senate. The House still doesn't know what to do with it. They better do something fast, because of March 21st, excuse me, March 31st, if that date comes and goes and there is no extension to the highway bill, we will not be able to collect gas tax at the pump anymore. We've lost revenue, and every project, bridge project, road project that has federal funding will stop. But the good news is, is that in the Senate bill, there was a carve-out for the rural road safety, and there's a carve-out, a special set aside for the off-system bridges. There's 28 of those in Delmar County and three of them need replacing, so that's a good thing. The bad thing is, it's only a two-year bill. The House is working on a five-year bill. Hopefully, the House will just take the Senate bill, get it done for two years, and then work on their own bill for extension. And that's pretty much what was going on at RCRC. Had an opportunity to talk to some constituents, had a meeting with some of the unions. They had some questions as to what they thought the county priorities were. Also, celebrated the birthday of my youngest son, not my youngest child, my youngest son turned 21. Welcome to the world, Joe. Then attended Saturday a Tri-Agency workshop. And Tri-Agencys is a joint powers economic development authority between the city, the county, and the harbor. We also had representation there from Curry County and from Brookings. And it was, went through the goals that we had, went through our prioritization, what would be done, what do we think the effort of Tri-Agencys should be, and reiterate what those are. They will be coming back to us at our meeting on Wednesday, I believe, and discussing it some more. But it was a good, good four-hour process, and then also had an opportunity to meet with the Elk Valley Rancheria and do another two-by-two there, which is just a communication process. Excellent. Reaffirmed that one of our original partners with sovereign nations and economic development in this community is back on board, looking to be an excellent partner with us again, primarily beginning with enhancing communication between this board and their council. So great news there, and glad to be here.
Thanks. Supervisor McClure?
Yes, thank you. I too am happy to be here, because this being my alma mater, a few of us on the board here, but it's a place where we all got started, so I kind of appreciate coming back and being a high school teacher myself. I know the rigors of high school. In fact, one of the most important meeting, I think I participated in, in the past two weeks, was part of the high schools reorganization of the district trying to wrap its hands around what works and what doesn't work, and how we can have data centers assisting us, and how can we define the needs of our students to better meet those needs. So that was, that's ongoing in staff development, and it's, the district is taking an extremely serious look at how can we make education more effective in our county. I was able to attend the Automation Goal Committee meeting at the Fire Hall, which was amazing, to see the equipment that we have there for any kind of emergency service or any coordinated effort. And it's also a place that the public can use if they need to do interactive meetings, because it doesn't require us to have to go to Sacramento every time we need to get a meeting. And that, and that building is absolutely wired and ready to go, thanks to Dan and his team. That's a good thing that's been happening, and I think Cindy is part of that too, also, so good job. I, I too met with some union representatives and answered a 27 question questionnaire that ended up being about 12 pages long, so I spent some time doing that. The Redwood Park Association has met, and we did our, we're doing our strategic planning, so we're starting to get a really good handle on how we can participate in making tourism a more attractive activity in the county with some of the different classes that are offered. There's gonna be two possibilities this year of the bike ride in that Berry Creek, which will bring people to our community, and hopefully they'll stay around a few days. Juvenile Justice Commission met, and their final report is signed and ready to go. I am happy to report that, I haven't seen it, it hasn't been published yet, but Delmar County Harbor District, the permits are on the Coastal Commission's agenda. And that's a really exciting step, that those three permits are gonna get approved next week, or the second week in April. And that was, because I had an opportunity to be on the Coastal Commission, there was gonna be a six-month delay in giving it on to, it wasn't gonna come on the April agenda, it was gonna possibly be delayed for six months, which could have put the entire Harbor District into a spiral of funding. But because I was there, I was able to go to the director and say, this cannot happen. Our community must have this. And they listened. And I think that that's something that, for the first time in Delmar County, we had that direct inroad there. So I'm excited, I'm hoping it's gonna be published this afternoon, so I can read the report and make sure everything's on the right side. But I'm fairly certain that all three permits are going to be approved.
Thank you, Supervisor McClure. Supervisor Hemmingson?
Well, I guess since everybody else is happy to be here, I'm happy to be here. I don't wanna be the third, or the fifth, or whatever, third. I hope, I don't wanna be outside, that's for sure. As Supervisor McClure mentioned, IT gave a little presentation at the CDF, which was really cool. It was neat. We got to see Sylvia at her desk in, in the county offices while we were at the CDF Hall, along with Calvin. And I think Rachel was on a cellphone, so she was in the audience, but she was up on the big screen, so she could've done that from anywhere. Really neat stuff. It was pretty cool. I don't understand it all, and don't know how it works, and I don't think I could get on with my phone, but it was neat to watch somebody else do it. Supervisor Sullivan and I were asked to talk at the, at a tea party meeting, which I don't know that they meant for us to go on so long. It was kind of a Sullivan and Hemmingson tag-team thing. We, I think we were there for a couple hours. We meant to speak for about 15 minutes, I think, or half an hour, and it went on. There's a lot of good questions. I was certainly was very happy to be there and answer the questions the best I could. There was a lot of interest in there at the county government, and it was very well-attended. I don't think there were, I think the seats were all full. I don't, I didn't get a count, but I would guess there was 100 people or thereabouts. Had a two-by-two with Smith River Rancheria, Supervisor Sullivan and I and staff on the projects that they're doing. They've got an upcoming hotel project that's gonna be a relatively big project for this area. Sounds like good things are happening out there. Had a, with staff and Supervisor Sullivan, we had a strategy meeting before our coordination meeting, pre-scoping meeting with the Forest Service on the travel management and restoration plan that they're calling now. And then, and then we did have that pre-scoping and coordination meeting with the Forest Service, which at first look appeared to be a waste of about an hour and a half, because they had come in with a predetermined outcome of the meeting, were not wanting to listen, or I guess they listened, but they were not wanting to change any of the documents at the county's request to include things such as dispersed campsites, roads that were missing off of their map. There was a, quite a few issues that the county had with the documents that they were gonna present to the public, because the public was not going to be able to comment on all those, all those things that they should be able to comment on. So as it turned out, Mr. Kelly, Tyrone Kelly, who is our supervisor, forest supervisor, called me the next day and indicated that they were going to include those items in the scoping document that we had talked about. I don't know if I told Mr. Hamblin yet. He's looking with a surprise look on his face, but yes, he's indicated that they are going to try to get all of the issues that the county had presented to them on the documents before they go out to the public. I don't know if we'll have a meeting prior to that. I think the, one of the first meetings is the third, so I don't know if they'll have that stuff ready to go by then or not. Unfortunately, my wife's father passed away over the last two weeks, and so I had to go to services there. He was 95 years old, great guy, but still, he was active right up until the end. I was, I had to attend the services for him, so I was out of town for a few days. I did have a meeting with our Executive Director of Local Transportation Commission, Tamara Layton. The state is now requiring that we change the way we do her contract. It's a much more cumbersome and time-consuming way to do her contract. It's not going to change the amount of work that she's gonna do for the commission, but it is gonna change the amount of work that she has to do, because she has to do the work that they want her to keep track of her time scheduling. It seems kinda silly when this is, this ends up being one of those one-size-fits-all, where that's the only person that we have that does all of our transportation, our local transportation items, so she does it all, our work plans, or all of the processing of everything. And now she has to, anyway, she has to schedule her time differently. It just looks like a lot of work to me for, for no benefit. We've got, like, previously, we had just an out-and-out, one-year contract, and she took care of all the work. It's not, basically not gonna change the amount of money that we pay her, it's just the way that she has to record her time. So it seems to be pretty cumbersome. I went to a meeting in Eureka that was attended by CalFire, and Fishing Game, and the Sheriff's Department, and Delmar Ambulance, and representatives from Congressman Thompson's office, and Assemblyman Wes Chesbrough's office, and the Governor's office on the Red Mountain Communication Site that is supposed to be removed in 2022. There is no alternative site, which means that we will lose most all of our coverage for any emergency services in Delmar County. CalFire, Highway Patrol, Fishing Game, none of those, none of those entities will have the communication capabilities that they have now. It's, it's an issue that we're looking into, and hopefully we can get it resolved. CalFire is the owner of the equipment on the site, and they want to do some major repairs and are unwilling to do those major repairs if they can't get an extended lease. So hopefully we'll get that fixed up. I had Delmar Solid Waste Management Authority Agenda Review. That meeting is at 3:30 today, so we'll be ready for that. We'd be appreciative. Had a teleconference, RC and D teleconference, mostly going over the budget. Things are doing pretty well, limited amount of funds that we're, that we're getting. We've, we're doing pretty well with what we've got. I also attended the Marine Protection Area, the Marine Protected Areas, EIR, meeting that they had the other night. There was, there are still some issues out there. Uroch tribe has, has some real issues. They spoke, several speakers from the Uroch tribe spoke in opposition to the EIR. I don't know if that's the right word, opposition, but had some comments, I guess, on them not including some, some things that they thought should be included. I went to the Solid Waste Task Force first meeting in quite a while. There's quite a few new members, so I did want to welcome them to the meeting. I didn't stay for the entire meeting. They will be reporting out at the Solid Waste meeting this afternoon. But anyway, I did wanna welcome them and thank them for their time. As Supervisor Finnegan said, we did, we kind of renewed our two-by-twos with Elk Valley Rancheria. It was a great meeting. It was nice to, to get back to a pretty informal and candid discussion with, with, with the representatives. I was, it was very welcoming. I did like that. And yesterday afternoon, had a local area formation commission meeting. It was a pretty short meeting, but we did go over what we expect to do in the future, future SOIs that are coming up, which is fair of influence for community districts, and that's about it.
Thank you, Supervisor Hemmingson. If I can just remind the audience, and I'm gonna do this going forward, if you've got a wristwatch with an alarm on it or a cellphone, please turn it off. The last couple meetings we've had that, and it really, at back in the county, we do have signs on the door to say you can do not bring your, or turn off your cellphone. So just a, a short reminder. I attended Agenda Review this last week. The, also on Saturday was a really active day for, for county business. Tended the Tri-Agency Annual Strategic Meeting, which is an annual planning session that Tri-Agency, which is the harbor county and city, as an economic development agency, joint powers authority. Also, as Supervisor Finnegan mentioned, who was in attendance as well as our CAO, Jay Serena, Curry County and Brookings were represented there, too. And I think it's been a while, and something we wanna look forward to is beginning to, you know, get rid of that line at the border. And we've made attempts before in the past. I'm hoping that we can, you know, potentially schedule a joint meeting with Curry County. They've got some financial issues happening up there, like everyone else is. But it was a good meeting, and there was some good information acquired at that meeting. That afternoon, Jay and I went up to Gasky, and our, our, well, the director, basically, of OES, well, you're the director of OES. What's your title, Cindy?
Emergency Services Manager.
The Emergency Services Manager. Cindy Henderson, I wanna thank you for, it's kind of a pilot program. It was emergency preparedness for Gasky. Gasky's in a unique geographical situation where potentially in a disaster, you could be, they could be isolated. It's a small, tight-knit community up there. The attendance was great. I would say it was probably close to, what do you guess, 80, 90 people that were in attendance?
Ninety.
About 90 people. So, and it really was, a lot of it was getting to know your neighbors, mapping the community in terms of knowing what resources already exist there as well. There are different medical supplies and stuff within the community at Gasky that people need to be aware of. But I, you know, I wanna thank Cindy for, for organizing that, as well as... But I, you know, I want to thank Cindy for, for organizing that as well as Debbie Wakefield, Dennis Louie, and Irene Tyne's. It was a great presentation, and it's the first meeting, and we're hoping at some point this will kind of blossom out to the rest of the county. So I'll keep, keep you all aware of how it goes and updated as, as to how it went. But it really was a, a great meeting, and I think the feedback was really good as well. Met with county staff regarding the Fred Haight project, which is one of the projects on the CDPG request today. And it looks like we, from a county perspective, we can go forward with it, assuming the funds are in place and get the project done. So I'm hopeful that, that project, by the way, has been a county, one of the top priorities in the county for over a decade. All the environmental, everything has been done, it's just going to construction and finding the funds for it. So this is why it's essential, and I know the community in Smith River's been waiting for it for a long time, just for safety reasons as well, is just improving the, the community out there. Tended the annual dinner and auction for the Community Assistance League, which used to be Easter sales, and now it's more locally controlled. A lot of good work they did. It was very well-attended and a fun evening. Also attended the CAL Tran, Smith River Rancheria Safety Project Traffic Calming Projects that they have in Smith River. It was kind of a, to let the community know about what things are on the agenda as to improve the traffic safety and calming in Smith River. The tribe has put a lot of work into it, and a lot of good ideas have come out of the process they started with this. In fact, they just received a Tiger grant, which not very many communities have, and so they've done a lot of work on that. It's a good project, and I'm glad they put the work in for that. Had a couple issues with Forest Service. One, we had a, as Supervisor Hemmingson mentioned, we met with the Forest Service and discussed their roads inventory and management plan, and what was supposed to be a coordination meeting ended up being a, we're just going to tell you in advance meeting of what we're actually doing. Very disappointing. And I, no Supervisor Hemmings said he, said he got a couple of phone calls from Tyrone Kelly, the Forest Supervisor, saying, well, we kind of, we're going to do this, you know, what we talked about doing beforehand is including things that the county wants everything on the table. We want the public to be able to comment on the issues that are happening with this, and to, to take the approach that we're not going to discuss it isn't, is not appropriate and it's wrong. So I'm, I'm, hopefully there's a little light at the end of the tunnel in terms of the Forest Service beginning to work with the local community about what things that we need to have in there as well, and at least having it up for discussion, because it seems to be a foregone conclusion that these things are going to happen. It's been determined from above that this is what's best for Delmar County, and I don't agree with that. I know Supervisor Hemmingson and most of the board members, and I believe the board as a whole doesn't, doesn't agree with that. The second thing is the deal with Red Mountain. And I'm hoping that we can get to a point that, essentially, if you've seen some of our past meetings, last time Forest Service spoke to us, they screwed up on their document, did not listen to, did not list Red Mountain as a communication site, and so now that it's not listed as a communication site, the ability for the state to go in and put the, you know, to put the necessary communications equipment to upgrade it because it's disintegrating, they, they're not able to do that right now because we're in a situation where it's not a communication site. Well, any of these agencies, CAL FIRE, CHP, Fishing Game, any of the emergency services folks, and we're just talking public safety, all of them have said, and including tribal staff of the Uroch Tribe, has said, this is the only place you can do it. You cannot duplicate what's at Red Mountain. So we're hoping that we can come to some kind of resolution and get that stuff upgraded because it is essential for all of the people in this community to have that, those sites and listed as a communication site. It's unfortunate the Forest Service is kind of standing back now, and it's their, but they need to amend their plan, basically is what it comes down to, because we're reached this point because of an error on the Forest Service's part. Had a two-by-two, two-by-two with Smith River Rancheria and Supervisor Hemmingson, and I want to thank them for, one of the things that they are doing with us is giving us advance notice of the projects they're working on. And I, I can tell you, in terms of communications and relationships, that's one of the best things that can happen. And I, I want to thank Chairman Miller and their CEO, Russ Krabche, on beginning to just give us advance notice on what's coming down the pike and how it's going to affect the county. So I appreciate that. Spent an evening with Supervisor Hemmingson at a Tea Party meeting. We were asked to come speak on local county issues. It was supposed to be 15, 20 minutes. It was about, and we were there for two hours, which isn't a bad thing. It was, it was really good because a lot of these folks really want to know what the issues are that are affecting us. And looking at the national scale, what the national media covers all the national issues, we don't have the same set of issues. There are a lot of things that are different. For example, for us to get major projects done in Delmar County, we need earmarks. Earmarks have a, a nasty taste on the national level, but they're essential to us. And then with the feds owning 75% of the land here, I think there's a responsibility on the federal government to provide some of those things. But it really, the good thing is that there was an honest conversation about just, you know, what, what things are, what, what are issues we face on the board all the time within the county, and it was great to see, it was encouraging to see that people really want to know what, what's going on. So it was more of a, a dialogue and, and like you said, the tag team of trade back forth because we got a lot of questions, which questions are always good. The only other thing, just so we can make a note to IT as going forward, I've gotten some complaints from people watching the meetings, and they're having a hard time listening to what we're saying on the microphone level. So we'll probably be fine today, but something to deal with county-wise. And other than that, also, as Supervisor McClure said, the majority of the boards alumni of Delmar County, Delmar High School, so it is good to be back in high school for, back in the library. It's been several years since we've been, all of us have been here at one time or another. So I'm glad to be back, and I'm hoping that we'll get some students involved, local government essential part of, of the civics situation. So, okay, with that in mind, we're going to go to the new line item, report from the County Administrative Officer, Jay Serina.
I'll make this relatively brief. At this point in administration, a couple of different things we've been working on is, one includes the Request for Proposal for the Manual Arts Building. There's some repairs that are being done in response to a fire that happened a couple of years ago, and it's because of some of the situations that have occurred with our insurance carrier as well as a contractor or two that was working on it. We're now taking that project over, and we should be out to bid on that within the next couple of weeks. Or we're out to bid on, we should have a closure on it once the questions are answered. We're also finishing up the review on the broker RFP that the board approved here about a meeting ago. Those have all been received, and they're quite detailed, and they will essentially be assisting us with the reviewing our health plan and the ever-increasing cost of healthcare for our employees, and coming up with some solutions that will assist with the new national health, healthcare changes that will happen in 2014 for us. So that's a relatively significant proposal that we've received, response from about six different insurance companies. We have sent out our final billing, which has been disputed on the Roy Rook Boat Launch. Reported out on that one, it is complete, the, or the Townside Boat Launch, I mistaken the other one. Essentially, it's been done, it's complete, it's working, but we're having some discussions with the contractor regarding some charges that they feel are extra, and we do not feel are extra. So we've sent out the final billing payment, and we'll be discussing that with them over the next several weeks of its respect. As reported by supervisors, I attended the Tri-Agency meeting on Saturday also, and one of, just a couple of staff members were there, was requested to get involved in regards to scheduling meetings with variant, various entities to discuss results-based budgeting and some outcomes in regards to what we fund for economic development. So I'll be working on that with the city manager, and I believe that'll be set up in the next week or two. I also attended the OES event in Gaski, at the behest of the Emergency Services Manager. This is a, this is a relatively big project for Cindy, and she'll report out on this at some other date when she gets this rolling, but this is a community-wide event. It was extremely well-attended. Gaski came out to get 90 people on a Saturday afternoon for something that is, in our opinion, the OES opinion, is relatively important, that these communities be prepared to take care of themselves, because if, when the big one hits, and when we have some sort of an emergency and they're isolated, they need to be prepared to stick it out on their own for a while, and they need to know their neighbors. It's a good idea, it's a good plan, and it'll take some coordination with all of the communities. I think it's going to be a little bit easier for the Gaski area because they are isolated, and they are pretty resilient, and they're used to being on their own a little bit. It's going to be a challenge as they get closer to the urban areas, but Cindy will be taking that on with the people that Supervisor Sullivan mentioned earlier, and it'll be interesting to see how that works with the other communities. But I think Gaski stepped up, and will set the example. So I think I'll be having Cindy stop by to give us updates on a relatively regular basis as this goes on. She's going to be up here to talk about another issue or another event, I guess it is, happening this week. The Red Mountain Communication Site meeting I attended with Supervisor Hemmingson as well as a number of other agencies. It's an ongoing issue that needs to be worked out, and depending on who comes to the table at what time, I expect that we'll be there through Deb with Delmar County as one of the leaders trying to come up with some solutions. We have recently put out our requested budget schedule, which will start in April. That's the beginning of our budget year. We just got done with our mid-years, and we'll be probably working on that along with all of the departments through the deadline in October, based on what the state does. And because there's an election in November, we'll probably be kicking it up again as soon as we get some results from the November election. That would be the highlights. Okay. Thank you. Brief report.
Hey, I, you know, I do want to touch back on before we get a public comment here. It really was kind of groundbreaking, the OES meeting that was, was set up in Gaski. We're hoping at this point it can be the pilot program to spread to the other parts of the county, so I would encourage the other supervisors, if you, at the next meeting, if you have an opportunity, we'll let you know when the meeting is, but it really is, because from that you can, Neighborhood Watch can, can pop up, as well as if you had an isolated situation, it's good to know who the nurse is in the community, who the doctor is, who, you know, who's got what equipment to be able to do, you know, if you need a cat or you need some emergency type of equipment. It's always good to know who, who is available and what, what expertise they have. And it's, you know, in a lot of respects, it improved law enforcement and safety in the areas as well. So I would encourage you on the next one, we'll let you know when it is, but it would be one we'd want to start branching out to other parts of the county. So at this point, I'm going to go ahead and open public comments. Members of the public may address the Board on matters which are within the jurisdiction of the Board. If you're addressing the Board regarding a matter listed on the agenda, you may be asked to hold your comments until the Board takes up that matter. Please limit your comments to three minutes or less, and I believe the microphone's on. So we'll go ahead and open up a public comment.
Public comment or anything?
Yeah, as long as it's not an item on the agenda, yeah. And you'd say your name too for the record.
Yeah, Andy Larson, County. Basically, I did get to attend the last board supervisor meeting, but I did get to view it on tape. Very much a concern, the airport giving up four-to-one litigation, as it was put by Mr. Hemmings. We're running out of land to deal with. If you guys were playing a poker game, you're dead from the start. Our land in the county is diminishing, as it was put at that board meeting. We don't have a lot to deal with anymore. Quite honestly, if we have to do something else with land, then we're going to have to deal with it. And being forced to give up land, we need an airport. I agree, we have to have an airport, that is something. But you also have, like the Coastal Commission, the state, but the Coastal Commission basically saying they won't deal with anything less than four-to-one. That's not even good, what lands are worth. We're giving up prime, but one-to-one, we're, we're out of land. How much is owned by the state and the feds in Delmar County to start with? We can't depend on a retirement community, we can't depend on tourism. We've got a lot of people that need jobs, and if you don't have land, you're not going to have jobs. Or just take Delmar County, suck it up, and give it to the state, and tell everybody to move out of the county. I mean, what else are we going to be faced with? Your charge as supervisors, and I'm sure you deal it, is take care of us now, but take care of us in the future. Yes, we need an airport to further economic growth, but at the same time, we're giving up our future at a four-to-one ratio. And I totally understand that you can't dictate terms to the Coastal Commission, but one-to-one is fair. Where, and I, my biggest concern is, what I heard out of the meeting was, well, I guess we have to get an airport. So does that mean we buckle down or we shove back? And I understand that it was not approved to mitigate four-to-one, but to try to get one-to-one. But as Martha put it, the commission is going to tell you, hey, either get a lawyer, spend some more money because we're going to stick, the board would probably stick to four-to-one. And if we're dictated on what we can and can't do, then, like I said, move out, the Board of Supervisors doesn't have a chance to do any dealing. It's going to be shoved down the throat.
Thanks, Andy. Any other public comments? Okay, seeing no public comment, we'll go ahead and close the public comment part of the meeting, and can we go ahead and take budget transfers? Any, I'll entertain a motion, we only have one budget transfer.
Will be approved.
Sorry? It's been moved second. Any public comment on the budget transfer? Jeremy, could you please pull the button?
Supervisor McClure?
Yes.
Supervisor Hemmingson?
Yes.
Supervisor Finnegan?
Yes.
Supervisor Sullivan? Yes. Okay, so we have a timed item that was going to start five minutes ago, so we'll go ahead and jump to that. It's a presentation by the National Marines Fishery, or a presentation to the Board regarding the Coho Salmon Recovery Plan.
Hi.
Hi.
Well, that's an incredible deal here, and I also have some extras in case you need an audience to look at.
Julie, you're going to, you're going to need to speak into the mic here, so introduce yourself.
We'll do.
Okay.
Thank you for having us here today. I'm happy to be speaking to you about the Coho Salmon Recovery Plan that National Marine Fisheries Service is drafting, and I just wanted to give you an idea of the materials that I brought with me that, that you'll have copies of. One of them is a CD copy of the actual recovery plan, which is in draft form right now. We're very interested in getting comments from the Board and from the public on the plan, and the deadline for that is May 4th.
Julie, could you introduce, just, we have, we're on the internet also, if you can introduce yourself just in the public.
So my name is Julie Weeder, and I am the Recovery Coordinator for the Southern Oregon, Northern California Coast Coho Salmon, which extend into this area. I'm also here with Ann Garrett, who is a supervisor from our office, and I'm here today to give you guys a sense of what's in our plan and to invite you to participate with us in developing it. So as I said, I brought a copy of the plan itself. I also have a copy of what we call the Keys to Understanding, which is kind of a summary of our plan. And I have an instruction sheet. It tells you how to comment on the plan on one side, and on the other side, it gives you a summary of what's in each chapter of the plan. I'm happy to hear that we're broadcast on the internet, because hopefully some of the public will see this and will become interested and give us some input. I wanted to comment first, before I get started, on some of the things I heard today in your meeting, and I heard that Supervisor Hemmingson felt that he went to a meeting where he felt like there was a predetermined outcome to, to the issue at hand. And Supervisor Sullivan mentioned that he went to a meeting where it was kind of a tell-you-in-advance meeting, and pretty much everything was settled, and you were just being told what was going on. And that's, that's, I can understand why that would be a frustrating situation for you guys to be in, and I want to reassure you that that is not the case. be in, and I want to reassure you that that is not the case with our plan. Our plan is in the public comment period right now, and we are receiving comments from many entities, including Boards of Supervisors and the public. And we anticipate spending a great deal of time going over those comments with the folks that have been commenting to us. And I look forward to getting a lot of input from you guys.
Okay.
Sure. How do I advance? Do I just say next slide? Or is there some sort of...
You have a wireless mouse.
Oh, okay. So, what do I do?
You can go ahead and just click, right-click, and it'll go, it should go to the next slide.
Okay. No, not working.
Right-click?
Yeah, I did right-click. Oh, how about this?
You got the point.
Oh, good idea. For the folks in on the Internet, bear with us for a minute. Maybe I need to poke business.
Maybe we can do next slide, maybe that will work.
Yeah, that'd be fine. Next slide, please.
All righty.
Well, we'll wait for that to get resolved in just a moment here.
Yeah.
Yes, I've told you everything you need to know. So while we're getting started, I'll just let people know, kind of, Coho salmon extend across a good part of the globe, and they're broken into, oh, good. They're broken into what's called evolutionarily significant units, which are subsets of the species range that are considered to be of importance to conserving from a species perspective. So under the Endangered Species Act, Coho salmon are listed as an evolutionarily significant unit. So the one I'm here to talk to you about today is called the Southern Oregon-Northern California Coast Coho Salmon Evolutionarily Significant Unit, or S.A.N.C.O.H.O. salmon. And I'm here to tell you about what a recovery plan is, why we're developing it, and some major components of the plan, so that you'll feel more informed when you go to take a look at it. Next slide. When a species is listed under the Endangered Species Act, as occurred for S.A.N.C.O.H.O. salmon in 1997, there is a responsibility of the listing agency, in this case, the National Marine Fisheries Service, to determine how to get it off the Endangered Species Act. When the Endangered Species Act was first developed, this was a cornerstone of it, that you don't list something and then just say, gee, it's too bad it's listed, we're just going to walk away. We need to develop a plan so that we can improve the situation, so that it no longer needs to be on the Endangered Species Act. So a recovery plan, then, is that plan. It's the plan to restore the species to the point where we can just take it off the list. The recovery plan is an advisory document, and it is a voluntary plan. I know a lot of folks, when they hear the government come talk to them, the federal government come talk to them, especially NIMS, they often think of regulatory things. And this is a bit different for us. This plan is meant to lay out what we think would lead to recovery of the species, but the plan itself has no regulatory authority. It is possible that regulations could result from the plan, but that's beyond the scope of the plan itself. The recovery plan provides a roadmap to recovery, so that hopefully by the end, by, when the plan is final, all of our conservation partners, including the Boards of Supervisors, would feel like we're all on the right path together, and we are all following that same roadmap to recovery. So the intent of it is really to help align everyone's actions to the extent we can, so that we can do what we can to benefit the fish. NIMS prepares the plan for, with public input, but anyone can implement any element of the plan. And in fact, the plan, most of the things in the plan, NIMS doesn't have the authority or the resources to implement ourselves. So it's really critical that we all have a great chance to participate in the development of the plan, or else the plan will just sit on the shelf, and NIMS will say, gee, we have a plan. And unfortunately, the Coho won't be benefiting from it. So that's why I'm here today, to make sure that we have good communication. So you might hear about it as NIMS's recovery plan, but really, it's everyone's recovery plan. We're just kind of facilitating the thought process. Next slide. So I already said all this. Yeah, oh, one thing, it's not a funding plan either. We don't have any money attached to the recovery plan. We are hopeful that identifying tasks as being needed in the recovery plan will help in us and other folks getting funding to implement those plans. But it does not itself come with any money. Next slide. So, I was telling you about this S.A.N.C.O.H.O. salmon ESU, and that that was listed in 1997. The range of the S.A.N.C.O.H.O. salmon goes, is coastal streams in Northern California and in Southern Oregon. And it starts to the north with the Elk River in Southern Oregon, and it extends to the Matol River in California, and then it includes all the inland extent of those rivers. So you can see that includes three major river systems, the Rogue, the Klamath, Trinity, and the Eel. The S.A.N.C.O.H.O. salmon ESU is made up of 45 populations. The populations roughly correspond to watersheds, so there's a Smith River population, which is kind of equivalent to a Smith River watershed. I say kind of because in the case of the big places like the Klamath, it's broken into many populations. So there's a Upper, Middle, Lower Klamath, for example, and then there's a Shasta and Scott, Trinity, so on. Of those 45 populations, six of the populations, we got some information about them indicating that they were smaller than we originally thought, and so we've not included them explicitly in our recovery strategy. So our recovery strategy includes 39 populations. So essentially, this plan is to say, in each of those populations, in each of those 39 populations, what would be good things to be doing on the ground to benefit Coho salmon? And also, how will we know when we're done? How will we know when it's time to delist? What are our goalposts? Next slide. So, how will we know when we're done? That's a key point of this recovery plan. And in order to determine that, it was necessary to develop a habitat-based proxy model in order to determine the historic carrying capacity and production of the ESU. As you might imagine, historical information for particularly how many fish are present in each of those 39 watersheds, you know, people weren't collecting that sort of information. We're still not collecting that sort of comprehensive information. And so we needed to try to estimate what we thought the environmental capacity was, and we use this model called an intrinsic potential model. And I'm just going to briefly describe that to you. So that model was used to identify those 39 populations, to delineate them. It was also used to determine whether they were independent or dependent. Dependent just means that they are smaller populations, and they have a different role in the overall recovery of the ESU than a large population or an independent population does. And the IP model was also used to set abundance targets for those goalposts, so we know when we've succeeded. Next slide. The IP model is a spatial model. It was a GIS-based model, so people were not out there walking around on the ground measuring things. They were using information that was available about the characteristics of the landscape. An important part to note about the IP model is that it doesn't talk about current conditions. It says nothing about whether there's currently water in a place, or whether it's currently in good or poor condition. What it's really getting at is what the potential of a particular stream reach is to support Coho salmon. Because we all recognize that there's many, many stream reaches out there. We don't want to assume that every single one of them is going to just be gangbusters with Coho salmon. We want to get a sense of where is reasonable to expect that, and where it really doesn't make sense to be trying to get them there. So the IP model basically, oh, I think we, could you go back one? It's a function of the underlying geological and hydrologic characteristics of the landscape. So it basically looks at the gradient, how constrained the channel is, meaning how much the mountains impinge on the channel itself, and how much water is coming in. And also, it includes a temperature component. So if there's an area that's just so darn hot that the water would always be too hot, we want to recognize that. Next slide. So the model looked at stream reaches. It looked at stream reaches that were anywhere from 50 to 200 meters. So this is a pretty small area, and it calculates a value for the intrinsic potential of each of those reaches. And all of those values are summed up to determine what the number for a population is. So for example, for the Smith River, you know, there's a whole bunch of reaches, and they all add up to tell us how many IP kilometers we have. And well, I'll talk about that in a minute. Next slide. I mentioned dependent and independent populations, just to note that dependent populations were those that were, had five to 34 IP kilometers. So IP kilometers is really, just think of it as a measure of what you think the potential is to support Coho salmon in that place. So a place that has more IP kilometers has more potential than a place that has less. Next slide. So this is a map showing all of the stream reaches in the Smith River and in surrounding areas. And so this is what we had before we had the IP model. We really didn't know where would be good habitat for Coho and where wouldn't be. Next slide. After the IP model, we had a better sense. So you can see that many areas, but not all of them, have a gray line on them. And the darker the gray line, the better habitat it is. So an IP value of one means that it has amazing habitat, and IP value of zero means it's terrible habitat. Next slide. So you can see where Delnar County is on this map. I wanted to show you the areas, the populations that are within your range. So you can see there that we have the Smith River and the Lower Klamath. We also have a couple of small rivers, the Elk Creek and Wilson Creek. Another thing to get from this picture is that there are groups of populations that have different colors associated with them. Those different groups are called diversity strata. And they're basically groups of populations that we think are similar in their geology or geography or some other aspects of the fish. And we're treating them, we're kind of grouping them together when trying to determine when we've reached recovery. So the Smith and Lower Klamath are part of the central coastal stratum, which, as you can see, includes all the way down to the Mad River. So when you're thinking about kind of what's going on in areas within Delnar County, it's important to recognize the role that those populations that are in your area play in the overall recovery of the diversity stratum. Next slide. So now I just want to give you briefly an idea of a few of the main components of our plan, that I'm calling the foundations. There's delisting criteria, so once again, that's how we will know when we can delist, limiting factors or stresses, and recovery actions. Next slide. First, we'll talk about delisting criteria. Next slide. So as I said, our goal is to delist the species. And we also mean that, we use a term called viable, which basically, if the species or the ESU is viable, then we can delist it. So viability is what we're shooting for. So a viable ESU is made up of a combination of populations that all have varying degrees of extinction risk. So even though at one time, all of these populations were probably at low risk of extinction, we are not shooting for that as a recovery target. We only need some of those populations to be at low risk of extinction. Others, it's acceptable for them to be at moderate risk of extinction. So the overall S.A.N.C.O.H.O. salmon, all of that must be at a low risk of extinction or viable in order to delist. And every diversity stratum must be viable, but each population, as I said, does not. So altogether, of the 39 populations in the ESU, 17 of them, we are recommending be at a low risk of extinction. Next slide. Just to give you a sense of where we're at versus where we're shooting for, on the left, you see existing conditions. Red indicates a higher risk of extinction, and yellow indicates a moderate risk of extinction. You can see that most of the populations are red. In the recovered ESU, there would be a mix of low risk of extinction, which is in green, and a moderate risk of extinction, which is in yellow. And I'll get into a little detail about what it's like around here. Next slide. So those goalposts I talk about, we actually have four components to the goalpost. One of them is the number of spawners or the population size. One of them is the spatial structure, so that's how much of the habitat is occupied by the fish. One is diversity, that gets at genetic and life history diversity. And one is productivity, and that's basically the growth rate of the population. Next slide. So for independent populations, that's the bigger populations, we're looking for productivity to be greater than or equal to one. So we just don't want the populations to be decreasing in their productivity. For spatial structure, we'd like juveniles to occur in some percentage of the habitat, and that's 70% of the habitat for the independent populations. For diversity, we want to minimize the negative effects of hatcheries. We also want to maintain any sort of life history diversity that we already know about. For example, in Redwood Creek, there are fish that rear in the estuary for longer than is seen in many places. We want to hold on to that, because that's really important for resiliency of the whole ESU, that they have some variation in kind of how they do things. Next slide. So here's an example of how we calculated the abundance. So from the IP model, we get the number of IP kilometers in a particular area. We multiply that by the number of spawners that we need per IP kilometer, and that number of spawners comes from what role we need that population to play. So if it needs a low-risk...
Julie, I don't want to interrupt, but we, how much longer is the presentation? Because we have some other timed items we're going to handle, so...
Yeah, I will rush. So anyway, you multiply that by a number of spawners that you need, and that gives us a total number needed per population. Next slide. So for the Smith River, we have 325 IP kilometers, multiplied by 21 fish, gives us 6,800 spawners needed. Next slide. So once again, the abundance criteria, 17 of them, we need a low risk of extinction. Nine, need a moderate risk of extinction, and 13 just need to promote connectivity between those populations, so they don't have a particular spawner target. Next slide. So this map shows the diversity stratum that you guys are part of, and it includes the Smith River, Elk River, Wilson Creek, Lower Klamath, Redwood Creek, Maple Creek, Mad River, and a bunch of small populations in between. So you can see it's a pretty large area. Next slide. And these are the targets that we've got. So we would like there to be, for the Mad, or, sorry, for the Smith River and the Lower Klamath, for those to be at low risk of extinction, and also for the Redwood Creek, and then the Mad to be at a moderate risk of extinction. Next slide. So this leads to certain targets, numeric targets, which are way higher than the number of fish that are out there right now, no doubt about it. So for the Lower Klamath, we'd like there to be 5,900 spawners. Redwood Creek, 4,800. Smith River, 6,800. Next slide. We'll skip this. Next slide, yeah, sorry. Limiting factors and threats. Next slide. So one of the ways that we determined, so first, we have these targets, then we have to figure out how are we going to get there from where we are now. And the first thing we did was to determine what the problems were for the fish. You know, what are the habitat conditions that are causing problems for them? And so we called those limiting factors or stresses. Next slide. And there's also threats, which are usually human activities that may influence the fish. Next slide. Next slide. So here's a summary table for the Smith River, and this is the kind of thing you'd see if you were commenting on our plan, and this is a great place for you to provide input to us. This is our assessment of kind of what we think the major habitat problems are for the fish. Next slide.
Can you go back?
Want to go back? Yeah.
Yeah, the water quality is an issue in the Smith?
Yes, that is due to pollutant.
What?
It's not due to water temperature or DO, it's due to pollutants.
Okay, I guess I'm confused, it's the cleanest river in the United States, I guess, what would you compare it to?
And again, this is ripe for your comment. Next slide. So recovery actions are another part that you'd be particularly interested in, and that's basically, what do we think needs to be done on the ground to try to improve those habitat conditions, so that the fish can reach the targets. those habitat conditions so that the fish can reach the targets? Next slide. So some of the recovery actions I've identified for the Smith and Lower Klamath are to improve habitat in the estuary, increase in-stream habitat complexity, reconnect the channel to the floodplain. Next slide. Reduce pollutants, increase the frequency of breaching of the sandbar at Lake Tulawa and Lake Earl, remove fish passage barriers, improve bank stability, shading, and the amount of large wood that's coming into the streams, reduce sediment delivery. So just rush through that last part. Please ask me on anything about it, but I just wanted to keep your timeline. So for those on the internet, please give us some comments on our plan. You can go to the Southwest Region NIMPs website. You can just put in SWR and MFS and the search engine should come up. And we look forward to hearing from you.
You have any questions?
Oh, yes.
Any questions from supervisor Hammington?
When was the Coho salmon listed?
97.
So from 1997, the map that you were showing us, that's current conditions or that's 1997
That's current conditions as best we know from the information we have. It's definitely after 1997, but often, as you know, the information is not available from year to year of exactly what conditions are in the ground.
So we don't know what the Coho salmon has done since from 1997 till now, whether it's increased or decreased?
We only know that in a qualitative way because a lot of the time, they haven't been counted. But it's our assessment of what the current extinction risk is, is that they, many of the populations are at high risk of extinction right now. In individual places like the Rogue, we'd be able to tell you because they have a time series that goes for a long time. To answer your question.
Supervisor Finney?
Well, you answered this question, but I'm not sure I would agree with the answer. To say that you really don't have a qualitative analysis of the difference that's occurred with the species from 97 to now, basically 15 years.
Why not?
Reports we get is that it's improved, number one. The reports we get is that the, how to take care of the creeks has drastically differed. It used to be that you would sue the timber companies because they put logs in the river. So you made them take them out at a high cost. Now you're paying conservation groups to put them back in. It lists that mining is a problem when actually mining done properly and with the permits enhances the gravel beds for Coho habitat. The minor reports we've had in the past from some of the studies coming out of the Mill Creek drainage is that the Coho population is far surpassing expectations. I know you did some good work here, but I get very suspicious when something is put forward as a plan and as a recommendation that cites that the problems, the critical factors is ag uses and practices, timber harvest and harvest practices, roads, urban residential, industrial development, and mining and gravel extraction. It sounds to me like we ought to shut it down.
Well, if you look at the recovery actions in our plan, we certainly don't advocate shutting anything down.
And the nose of the camel in the tent was the clarity of the water in the Smith River when there's a bullseye on ag. And that was very apparent, and that's very disturbing to me.
Well, thank you for letting me know that. And that's, again, I encourage you guys to be part of our process so that you can get that on the record and we very much will appreciate hearing that.
Appreciate that.
And do you want to say something?
I'd just like to add that we do an update of the status review every five years. So we just completed an update of the status of San Coho. And they're in fact not improving across the ESU. There's certain populations that have improved and many that have not and have continued to decline. We did see in the last five years that ocean conditions have gotten worse, but now this last fall, perhaps we're going to see some improvement. But that said, there's still, and there have been many great strides in the past 14 years for improvements in land use practices and the way that we go about agricultural and forest and timber harvest. But that said, there's still improvements that we need to make. And there's many things that we are still dealing with as legacy impacts in many of the watersheds throughout this ESU that still need to be addressed. We're interested and concerned about the water quality studies we have seen in the Smith River, but we are very much interested in preserving the lily farmers and the agricultural interest and working with folks in a cooperative manner to address those issues, to ensure that there's a viable commercial entity out there as well as recovery for salmon so we can get our fisheries back intact.
You brought up a point that maybe in the future, because I'm probably running out of time here, you can elaborate on, because everybody wants to study what's going on once they enter the river. And they look for that to be the problem. But you hit on the key is nobody's looking what's happening out in the ocean. And that is what should ought to be looked at. That's the big black hole of where perhaps the species is not being allowed to be populated.
I appreciate that comment and it's one we've heard before. We actually are looking at ocean conditions, but as you all are aware, that it's easier for us in many instances to address the freshwater habitat. And we need to make sure that we have strongholds within the freshwater to ensure that we can get the returns from the ocean. So it's a combined picture that we need to address.
One last comment is what you don't have here as a demonstrating factor is the lack of management of the forest. The forest protects our watersheds and this manage, with lack of vegetative management or lack of understory causing forest fires, is also a major problem that is not addressed. And perhaps we ought to turn the Bullseye and Forest Service to a certain extent.
I appreciate that comment as well and encourage you to submit comments to us. We're continuing to work with the Forest Service. And as Julie mentioned, I'm the North Coast Branch Supervisor, so Delnort County is part of my geographic area and I'm working very closely with Six Rivers on their management practices.
At the personal.
Appreciate that.
Supervisor McLeod? Do you want to grab the mic also?
Just a couple of questions in relationship to the water quality studies that have been done. Because in your document, you go back to 96 to 2000. And then there's a brief statement about a 2011 North Coast Water Quality Board. But who did those and how extensive were they? And what research happened behind that?
Most of what we've cited in the recovery plan are all studies done by others. We are referencing other outside material. I believe that you're referring to the Water Quality Board effort. So we were referencing their work. But it is an area of our interest that we'd like to explore in greater depth.
And were those peer reviewed? Do you know?
I'm sorry, I don't know that.
Because I think that that's, I think that that sometimes is a step that we tend to overlook, that we take A study and call it B study. And we're not sure if it's even been peer reviewed and then we start citing it. And sometimes it gets us in a little bit of trouble in trying to make a plan. Because I also, as part of the impaired water quality, there was something about having the channel opened at the mouth. And I think that was done, but I don't think it's reflected here. I think that there was some habitat work that's been done there, but I don't think it was part of this. And I agree that we have legacy issues that we need to deal with, but I think that we need to make sure that our references have been peer reviewed and everybody is in agreement that that is what we're going to base our projection on.
That's an excellent comment. Thank you for that. That is part of the reason why we want to look into it more, to look at the way that they did the study, potentially even come up with a further study to fill in some of the gaps from their study and to look at the rigors of that study. But it's something we have not yet had the opportunity to do it, Ms.
First of all, I want to thank you both for coming here and NIMPs for coming to make a presentation. Because, you know, myself and Mr. Serena attended your presentation up in Brookings. And I would really strongly encourage you in the future to actually hit the spot first since we're in the center of it. If you look at the map, we are basically the center and it is a Coho salmon area. It's going to be essential to us. Our economy really is dependent on it. One of the major economies is the ag community up there and the impact it would have on. And thank you for doing that. I'm hoping, I did have a question about timeline. What is our timeline to submit our comments?
May 4th is our deadline.
So we'll make sure staff and have some comments on this. It is encouraging, one of the things is that you want to have more frequent breaching of Lake Earl, which is something we've been advocating for a long time. Because it would have less of an impact on the environment if it was, you know, kept at a constant level. One of the things, though, I think that, I know you're, coming from your perspective, it's probably an innocent approach that it's a voluntary plan, but we've heard this before. And it's almost saying, well, we're going to put this toddler together with a book of matches and there might not be a fire, but reality wise, this is probably going to lead to regulations and laws. So that's our big concern, is that we're not dealing with trying to catch the train before it leaves the station. Because it will have a bigger impact just based on the amount of private land that's left in Delnort County and the shape our economy is. Any impact on any of these industries that are here is multiplied, much bigger effect than it would have in Humboldt or even farther up north. So anyway, that's my concern, is we definitely want to get our comments in and make sure that Delnort County is protected in the process.
Absolutely.
Any, do you have anything you'd like to add?
Really, just to, obviously, there's lots that we need to talk about. And I'm glad to be here talking to you today. And I hope that you guys ask us back or whatever way we decide to move forward. But this is clearly something that we need to spend a lot of time on with you guys and I look forward to doing that.
Okay. Any public comment then? Zach?
Hi, Isaac Orson. I'm a member of the Smith River Advisory Council here in Delnort County. And we've had some recent meetings regarding the Coho recovery plan. We did ask, we were part of the groups and entities that asked for an extension of a comment period. And we will be trying to formulate some comments and we encourage you or staff and everybody else in the community to attend and help put these comments together. We have done lots of restoration in the Smith River plain in those agricultural areas fenced and improve the riparian and in-stream habitats. And those need to be looked at. And monitoring is a major need to reach recovery. And we've been pushing for that for years, so thank you. It was until April, or was it March?
It was originally a 60-day comment period. And based on public request, we extended it to another 60 days. So altogether, it's 120 days.
Any other public comment? Yeah.
Good morning. Ken Smith, Delnort County Ag Commissioner. And I'd just like to echo the comments of the board that when you're referencing studies about the use of pesticides and control materials, make sure you include Cal EPA, like Department Pesticide Regulation and Water Quality. I read the documents that were submitted to me and I didn't see anywhere where I could, it just said, hey, study was done. And there was no way for me to go check up on that and verify that. Just a general comment, California has the strictest pesticide use laws in the United States and probably the world. Every product that's used undergoes years of research and testing, including wildlife impacts and millions of dollars are spent just to get the product to market. So to improve the integrity and credibility of your plan, I'd encourage broadening out and making sure all the studies are, like Martha said, peer reviewed and everybody's on the same page with it. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Ken. Yeah, go ahead.
Thank you for that comment. I do want to point out that sometimes the studies we use are not peer reviewed because they're the best available scientific information that we have. We absolutely want to know about any studies that are available and any studies that you think need to be done. But I just wanted to point out that sometimes peer reviewed is not a requirement for something to be considered.
I would probably reiterate what's been said before, though, is one of the factors in there is the economic impact on the community. And that does have to be factored in a recovery plan because you do have to factor the people in the process. And too often, these scientific studies that are done exclude people as part of the environment. So anyway, thank you for making the presentation. Mr. Buckles, you have a public comment?
Jim Buckles, Delnort County Deputy Ag Commissioner. I noticed that you mentioned pollutants. Do you have any evidence of pollutants in the Smith River? You might want to talk to the Water Quality Control Board because they just told me that they don't have any evidence of pesticides in the Smith River. And in 25 years plus, I've never heard of it being in the Smith River. There have been some in the tributaries, but never in the Smith River itself. So the Water Quality Control Board has a whole bunch of data that they need to look up. And I'm trying to remember the other thing I was going to say. Well, I lost it right now. I'll come back with that. I'll do it in the comment.
Thanks, Jim. Any other public comment? Okay, thank you for your presentation and we'll definitely be in touch with you on comments. Thank you. Okay, we're going to go to the other timed items. That was timed at, I believe, 10:55. Prove and adopt a resolution, title the resolution of the Delnort County Board of Supervisors approving an application for funding from the 2012 State Community Development Block Grant, CDBG program and authorizing the execution of a grant agreement and any amendments thereto with the state of California for the purposes of this grant as requested by County Administrative Officer Number 13 as an item on the agenda. Mr. Carney, do you?
Good morning. Back at your March 13th meeting, a public hearing was held to receive comments on our 2012 Community Development Block Grant application. At that time, the board provided direction to staff to modify the resolution that was presented and come back with, to this meeting, reflecting some changes. The directions were to bring the CASA Delnort activity back up to be fully funded, include an increase in the senior nutrition program with additional funding to go towards adult literacy program, take the administration, general administration, out of housing rehab, leave the multifamily rental rehab hole and the amount left over to reach our $2 million limit to put into the public improvement of Fred Haye Drive project. To that end, I'm coming back to the board with a resolution that meets just about all of those directions. We've made CASA fully funded back to their, what they requested. The senior center is fully funded, however, we did not increase that. The result, Charlene Macy did some research on that, found that she could only come up with about approximately $30,000 of offsetting costs that she could then redirect towards literacy program. As a result, you know, we do have the ability to have three activities in the public service. And that brought that back, the adult literacy program into the public service bucket, so to speak, with $63,000. And that brings us to the limit of the $500,000. The multifamily rehab project was increased slightly as a result. After the board meeting, we had an evaluation done by a consultant. And his recommendation was that the cost would be close to $400,000 and we increased it from $385,000 to $400,000. We took all of the general administration out of housing rehab and brought that down to $250,000. And the Fred Haye Drive project was then shown at $700,000. And this brings us to a grand total of $2 million. The other change in the resolution was then a commitment by the board, an additional section was added to the resolution committing road department funds estimated at $400,000 to be expected to... be expected to the county's portion of that Fred Haidt Drive project. Any questions?
You had a good job Jim, excellent.
See, they listen. Very good.
All right, okay, any public comment? Okay, seeing no public comment, I will bring you back to the board and I'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve.
Second.
A move in second. Jeremy, could you please pull the vote?
Supervisor Finnegan?
Yes.
Supervisor Sullivan?
Yes.
Supervisor Sullivan?
Yes. Thanks Jim.
I have a question on the CDBG technical assistance grants. Have they released the money yet?
They have just released those. We've got our contracts and as soon as I get this application done, we'll be doing subrecipro agreements on them. This will take priority.
Thank you.
Okay, at this point, we are going to take up consent agenda. I want to entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Move to approve.
Second.
Any public comment on the consent agenda? Okay, seeing no public comment, we'll bring it back to the board. Question?
Number nine, to approve the letters to send to the PFMC, I fully agree the letter should be sent, however, we need to say more in that letter. It's too weak. It says, "The small fleet of commercial salmon trawlers that make their home in Crescent City do not feel the restrictions that apply in the man that allows the commercial trawlers in Crescent City the ability to sustain." And that's the primary issue. Give me some meat.
Any comment?
I mean, I like fish too. Anyway, little wobbly.
Okay, so we, maybe we can structure that a little more.
Couple of sentences in there and why this is.
Well, and possibly also that it's vital to the economy.
Okay, so we'll, okay, so we're, are you amending your motion then to spruce up number nine?
Yeah, I just, I would ask that you direct staff to not use this letter verbatim, but the...
Intent, yeah. Okay. Any other comments on the consent agenda from board members? Okay, Jeremy, could you please pull the vote?
Supervisor Sullivan?
Yes.
Supervisor Finnegan? Yes.
Supervisor Sullivan?
Yes. Okay, so at this point, we will go, we have some proclamations to read and let's, that we're passing the consent agenda. Okay, let's go ahead and take a three-minute break for a restroom break and then we'll be back. We've only got a couple things left. Since it's been three minutes, we will call the meeting back to order. We are going to go to the two items we had proclamations for. So, and I believe Supervisor Finnegan's got this tsunami prepared this week proclamation.
I have a proclamation of the Board of Supervisors of the County of Delmar proclaiming the week of March 26th through the 30th, 2012 as tsunami prepared this week in Delmar County. Whereas California's long coastline is proximity to other coastal states with offshore earthquake faults, its location on the Pacific Ring of Fire may get vulnerable to tsunamis. And whereas California's been struck by more than two dozen tsunamis with waves three feet or more feet in height since 1812, including a 15 footer that caused damage, including devastating our harbor in Delmar County on March 11th, 2011. And whereas a dozen residents of Delmar County, California were killed by the tsunami generated by the 1964 Alaska earthquake. And whereas tsunami caused by underwater earthquakes and landslides can occur at any time and with little warning. And whereas education and awareness are fundamental to saving lives in a tsunami event. And whereas the state of California, the National Weather Service, and the County of Del Norte will commemorate the anniversary of the 1964 tsunami by testing their ability to issue a tsunami warning for Del Norte County by way of the emergency alert system on Wednesday, that's tomorrow, March 28th, between 11:00 and 12:00 noon. And whereas the Governor's Office of Emergency Services hopes to expand participation of all coastal counties in the test in 2012 and beyond. Now, therefore, the Board of Supervisors of the Del Norte County hereby proclaims the week of March 26th through 30th, 2012 as tsunami prepared this week in Del Norte County on this 27th day of March, 2012, signed by the Chair, Mike Sullivan.
Thank you. Cindy, do you want to accept the proclamation?
I just want to remind everyone that tomorrow you will hear Civil Air Patrol going across the area, you will see the emergency alerts on the TV, the radio, your known weather radios will go off and you will hear the sirens. So just remember, it's a test, it's necessary to know that our software is working and those signals are all correct. So just be aware, tomorrow will be our big test.
It says between 11:00 and 12:00, is the whole hour is necessary? We're only going to hear the siren.
Right. So what, why we say between 11:00 and 12:00 is because Civil Air Patrol would be flying the whole coast from Mendo all the way to Del Norte with two planes. So in between that timeline, they won't go over it and if they're late, they won't come into the area just as a precaution, but during that hour, you will hear that Civil Air Patrol sometime during that hour. But the sirens will go off anywhere between 11:15 and 20:00 unless there's a real event and we'll stand down and the test will stop.
Thanks Cindy. Okay, the other proclamation we have is item number six, Public Health Week, and Supervisor Hemmingson has that.
Yeah, thanks. This is proclamation of Board of Supervisors, County of Delmar County, State of California, proclamation of Public Health Week, April 2nd through April 8th. Whereas Public Health Week has been proclaimed for April 2nd through 8th, 2012 by the American Public Health Association and the state of California. And whereas advancements in public health have dramatically improved the lives of all Californians, children born today can expect to live 40 years longer than those born in 1900, largely due to public health achievements including clean water, safe, excuse me, safe foods, immunizations, prenatal care, and the creation of tobacco-free spaces. And whereas public health today represents society's best efforts to improve health by reducing health threats and by providing access to preventative health practices and effective healthcare services. And whereas the goal of public health is to empower individuals and communities to take responsibility for their own health by minimizing known unhealthy behaviors, taking preventative measures, and making informed choices about their health and healthcare, including eating healthy foods and exercising regularly. And whereas the national, state, and local focus will continue to be on building healthier communities, healthier children, and families during Public Health Week, now therefore be it proclaimed that the County of Del Norte Board of Supervisors designated April 2nd through 8th, 2012 as Public Health Week in Del Norte County, passed and adopted this 27th day of March, 2012.
Tobacco?
Uh-huh.
Director Ernong? Yes. Thank you.
Good morning, I'm Melvin Kenon, I'm program manager for Health and Human Services, Public Health Branch, and I want to thank you for the proclamation for Public Health Week and also the support of over 20 programs and services. Briefly, I'd also like to acknowledge the service and career of a public health professional. She's been a public health nurse in our community for over 25 years. And I'd like to ask you to help me thank her for her commitment to public health and our community.
No speech, Linda?
I just want to thank you again, it's been a pleasure. I have been here since 1984, I've always, obviously seen a lot of changes over the years. When I first came, we're Humboldt, Delmar County Health Department, and then of course when the prison came, we kind of went out, branched out on our own. But anyway, it's been a pleasure, I've enjoyed working here and hope to continue. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, so at this point, we have a, we're going to go on to item 14. Request for approval of a grant application to be submitted to Department of Fish and Game for a three-year Smith River DITSEN program. And I believe Zach Larson's got a brief presentation on pilot study.
Good morning again, honorable supervisors. And thank you for allowing me to present this brief, important presentation about our two-year pilot study that we conducted between 2010 and 2012. It's actually ongoing, we're about to wrap it up here at mid-April. And we are requesting three more years of additional funding to keep this, what we feel is a very important program, to continue monitoring our Smith River Basin fisheries and come up with the numbers, help to come up with the numbers to know that we're at a recovery stage for coho salmon. DITSEN is Dual Frequency Identification Sonar. It's simply an acronym for multi-beam high-definition sonar technology. You can produce video-like images of fish even in the dark and muddy conditions. It records and you can play back the files just like you would a DVR and there's other methods of software analyses. You can come up with unbiased fish counts and reasonably accurate length measurements. Our goals are simply to monitor annual salmon and steelhead abundance in the Smith River on a basin-wide scale, inform fishery management decisions, and develop standardized approaches. And ultimately, we want to help California achieve their salmon monitoring objectives. We have many partners, mainly the Department of Fish and Game, they supply the majority of the funding. The Steelhead Report Card also supplies some funding and a little bit from the Smith River Alliance. And we appreciate the county carrying out this project. We're located in the Lower Smith River, River Mile 6, at the Fred Haidt Boat Launch Facility managed by the County of Del Norte. And this is basically what it looks like from the air. The units ensignify a cross-section of the river channel to enumerate all of the fish moving upstream in the Smith. There's a small building that we house the electronics in and also communicate with both units through a wireless and hardwired network. Preliminary results of net upstream detections of fish in the first year were very similar to those, that of the second year. But these are not the estimates that we're coming up with. This is simply a net upstream detection. As you know, steelhead, they come back downstream and so you'll see some of those numbers elevated, particularly for the latter part of the season. Here is a graph that's pretty telling about, in comparison of 2010 with 2011, we got an earlier start, the second season, just because it took us time to put the infrastructure in during the first season. The line in blue is actually the flow and you can see its relationship with the numbers and timing of fish entry. We're also doing some comparisons. I mean, the technology allows us to compare daily, weekly, monthly, and seasonal abundance of salmon and steelhead. And much of this information will be included in our final report that you will see before it is submitted to the Department of Fish and Game. We're looking at several ways to differentiate between species. We have known runtimes, we have a hatchery that actually physically can identify salmon, steelhead, sorry, Chinook, coho, and steelhead. And we also have surveys occurring out of the basin that give us an idea of species We can also use the technology for sound management. the submission of this application to make sure that the portion of administration that the grant pays for allows us to cover our cost. And we've been working on that and he's got a scenario or two to, to try to do that and still comply with this new policy for Fish and Game.
And the motion to include the direction. Okay, the motion's been amended and second being, that second's been amended, too. Seeing no other public comment, I will bring it back to the board and Jeremy, could you please pull the vote?
Supervisor Finnegan?
Yes.
Supervisor McLeod?
Yes.
Supervisor Finnegan?
Yes.
Yes, okay. Going on to item 15, legislative and budget issues. Consider miscellaneous legislative and budget matters pertinent to the County of Del Norte. Authorize the Chair to sign and send appropriate letters with respect to matters pending before the state or federal governments.
We continue to see legislation coming through and bills that are going through the process. I will bring forward any of the requests for support that require the board's direct support. Those items that are consistent with the ledge platform, you'll get copies of letters as they go out. Over the last week or so, there's been some concerns regarding Medi-Cal and Medicare and the ambulance services in the county, I should say counties, it's not just us. So we may be seeing something like that come up in the next month or so, if not sooner. And we'll be forwarding that to the board. And budget-wise, I touched on it earlier, we were preparing to have all of the departments submit their requested budgets. That will happen in April, we'll begin having those individual budget meetings with all of the departments and we'll report back to the board as necessary prior to bringing forward a proposed budget by June 30th.
Excellent. Well, we'll see what the information is, but I also want to encourage those department chairs and heads of departments that, that basically it is your responsibility to come up with your budget. So it shouldn't be relied on admin to come up with the necessary changes in the budget if needed. It's, it is the department head's responsibility, so. Having said that, we will have a calendar on the next meeting of where we're, you know, where the locations are going to change so we can give public advance notice as well as supervisors. And that, we are at the county next week. So with that, I'll go ahead and adjourn the meeting and that's it for the DITSON.